Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of April 3, 2018. If you'll stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everyone, if there's a public comment that needs to be made, there are cards at the entryway, and there'll be two minutes, and you can hand it to staff. And also, if anybody is in need of any of the, for any of the upcoming meetings, persons with disabilities who require our aids, you can call our city clerk at 991-8078 for future meetings, and she'll be glad to have accommodations for you. So tonight, we have a special guest, and on our, first, let me approve the minutes. Before we move on, we're excited, because Mr. Nurse is here. So may I have, are there any addendums or any changes for the approval of the minutes? Tuesday, February 6, 2018?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. May I have a roll call, please? First, before we do the minutes? Sorry about that.
Here.
Commissioner E.G. Mani.
Here.
Commissioner Daswinal.
Here.
Commissioner Satori.
Here.
That's what we get for having three months off. So anyway, so now we go to approve our minutes for February 6, 2018. Do I have any amendments for our, our changes for our minutes? February 6, 2018?
For the approval.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, hearing none. We're going to move on to item number one, which is a special presentation from our Daly City Public Library Associate President, Tom Nurse. Mr. Nurse?
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for having me here tonight. It's a pleasure to be here. As you know, I'm a Commissioner on the personnel board, and so since I'm one of the older Commissioners here, having served now 33 years on that board, I come to tell all of my fellow Commissioners, I need you to join the DCPLA. And the reason for it is, is because it is a wonderful organization that was formed, it's a nonprofit formed by a former Councilman, Albert Talia, five years ago, six years ago now, and made up of members of our community and civic leaders. So far, it has been able to make gifts to our library system of $170,000, and we just want to continue to do more. We realize that the city's challenged with budgets, and so we believe that it's good to create awareness for our libraries, and to get our community involved, and to basically raise money down, but also, again, get involvement and awareness of what our libraries are doing. So the DCPLA, we have author talks, we have fundraising events, we do book sales, we go out and give a lot of grants, that's where most of the money comes from. And this year, our goal is to take our membership from about, somewhere between 250 and 300, see if we can get up to 500, because then when we go for grants, it's so much better when you have the larger numbers, and we're hoping that way we can just, you know, bring more money to our libraries and be able to continue to provide things that we need that are kind of, you know, special, but budget can't do it, but a special organization like ours, we can give the gift for something like that. And so that's what we're doing. I've already collected three applications or four applications from you, I appreciate it very much. If you'd like to send this in, if I've left you one, just mail it in, and our staff will get back to you and give you the information, and say $20 to be a member, but then you join a lot of people here who do something good for our libraries. So thank you very much, and for those of you that are already members and who participate, we appreciate your help, and hope everyone else will do as well.
Thank you, Mr. Nurse. Did anybody like make a comment? Well, we're in our libraries.
Well, no, I just, I would just like to encourage every single one of us, if we haven't already, which many of us already have, to come through and support. What a, what a great cause. We all love the library, we, and we don't visit enough. I think we should make it a point to, you know, find some time.
And you know what? I'm going to all the Commissions in the city, I'm going to the City Council, I'm going to Colma City Council, our senior citizens groups, the Historical Society in Colma, the Lions Club, the school lords, I'm going to all the organizations to do this and see if we can get the people who already step up anyway, and give our time, you know, as volunteers for the community, we already have a predisposition to helping, and so this is just one more.
Any other Commission comments?
As a former library Commissioner, I just want to say thank you as well. My, myself, my daughter, when we used to live by Geller Park, we used to go there like monthly. And I always referred to exposure to books, now she's a bookworm.
And one of the things we'd like to do, really, is if we can get our numbers up, there's money in the county, there's the Measure K line, you know, if we can go down there and get some larger amounts, maybe we can get enough to be able to put some plans together, maybe start to build a new library. Because Dallas is getting pretty old.
Yeah, and we need one for Main Library.
So, you know, we gotta think a little bit beyond just books and stuff, now we have other things, and involving the community and other organizations and partnering is a great way to go after larger funds.
So I'd like to also thank and let people also know, they put on great events, so like you get a free, like, on the St. Patrick's Day, for the corned beef and cabbage, a lot of great benefits, great socially, and they do, they do a lot of grants, and I'd like to acknowledge our library trustee currently is Lily Louie here tonight with us, who are doing a lot of hard work, and we appreciate everything you do, and continue your hard work, and we'll, we'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And everybody home, you, everybody has a friend, at least. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks again. Good night.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to item number two. We're going to open the public hearing, and that'll be the use permit UPR 7-17-12923 and design review DR-7-17-12924. This is an application by Derek Vinn for, to convert an existing two-story over garage office building to a four-story over garage residential apartment building at 1784 Sullivan Avenue, and that is APN 008-082-180, including 22 dwelling units. And with our associate planner, Mr. Alvin, would you do the honors of the presentation, please?
Good evening, and thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. The applicant is proposing to construct a 7,000 and 264 square foot, two-story addition to the top of an existing 9,886 square foot, two-story over garage office structure, as you mentioned. The structure would be converted to a 22-unit apartment building, including four studio apartments, 15 one-bedroom apartments, and three two-bedroom apartments. The parking requirement is subject to the recently enacted State Assembly Bill, known as AB 744, for residential development within a half mile of a major transit stop. The Colma-Bart station is within a half mile of this site. So the parking requirement, therefore, is .5 parking spaces per bedroom, or 13 spaces where 33 spaces would have been required otherwise. 13% of the units would be made available for very low-income households. The project is therefore eligible for a state density bonus of seven additional dwelling units. Our zoning ordinance allows a density of 21 dwelling units. The state density bonus is 28. The applicant has requested one unit, a state density bonus of one unit, so we're, that's how we got to the 22 units. Site location, so the site is just below the East Moore-Sullivan Avenue intersection, across the street from the Interstate 280 freeway. If you recall, there was a project here last year at this corner here, that remains vacant at this point, but we expect some sort of activity there soon. This is the site looking southwest. This here is the newer CVS building. Site looking northwest, that's that empty lot at the corner. The building is approximately 34 feet tall currently. And this is due south, so you can kind of see the height variation here. This building that was approved last year, I believe that was about 60, 65 feet. And that is the view looking east to 280. The site plan illustrates the parking configuration. This is a bit different from what you got in your packet. The applicant has rearranged the parking a bit, where two parking spaces would be at the front of the building, and one would be a handicap parking space. The garbage bins were moved from this space here to a little closer to the entrance. This is the fence here that lets you into the parking area. That would hopefully screen the garbage bins here. I think, I think that that fence would be, or that, I guess it's a gate, would be about five feet, six feet tall. So once we see a little bit more about, you know, once we see the illustrations and the details concerning that, we would make sure that there's some sort of screening there. Nine out of the 11 remaining parking spaces would be covered. It's just this space that's uncovered. This is a typical floor plan. All four floor plans are very similar to this. This is the fire escape here. Well, it's a tower, stairwell tower, but it would function as a, as a second means of egress. And here is the elevator. Rooftop plan includes just some turfed areas here, with some seating areas around the turf areas. We're going to also urge the applicant to consider a bit more landscaping up here to make it more usable. All of the usable open spaces would be here. It's about 3,000 square feet. There are no balconies proposed, or private balconies proposed. North elevation of the building, the existing building is about here, about 34 feet. That's about 60 to this corner. The tower's about 65 feet. The facade is, the facade treatment is completely redone. They're using a, or proposing to use a combination of stucco and what they call a fiber cement siding that resembles wood. So we'll get some samples of those. I think the color variation seems to work pretty well. There was some concern about making sure that the entry had some sort of presence. The applicant has, you know, architecturally worked on this to make it a bit more interesting, but it's a bit limited. This area is pretty small, but there is glass there and overhang. Of course, you don't see the parking spaces there. This is the south elevation. These balconies, or these, not balconies, but walkways, I guess, pathways in front of the back of the, back of the units, are continued up to the fourth floor. This is the stairwell, continuing this wood-looking cement fiber here, and these would be faux windows coming down the side of the building. This is the east elevation. As you can see, this is the gate entry to the parking area. Again, we tried to introduce a bit more glazing on the front facade, so we think it's a, quite an improvement of what's there now. It's, I think, would be welcome. Now, I've gone into a little bit of detail about the project affordability. The applicant, as, as you know from your staff reports, is, is a, is proposing to include an affordable housing component to a rental building, which is a bit out of the ordinary. So generally, all rental projects of five or more are subject to the city's affordable housing requirements. The project sponsor is satisfying this requirement by providing impact fees and affordable housing units. The project sponsor is proposing 13% affordable to very low-income households only. The San Mateo County income limits for affordable housing define very low-income as a household, as a, I'm sorry, very low-income household as a family of four earning, four or more earning, I'm sorry, four, earning no more than $65,800 a year. So that's the cap, and speaking to the housing coordinators, that, that will probably rise in the next year or so. The affordable housing impact fee is, however, based on a minimum affordable housing allocation requirement of 15%. That's set by the city. The project sponsor is therefore subject to an impact fee based on the prorata share of the unmet housing allocation requirement of 2%. So it comes out to be about $28,000. The project is exempt from CEQA, is considered infill development. Here are your findings. And staff is suggesting that we add a condition of approval to what you have in your staff report, that the project sponsor shall consult with a California-registered landscape architect to explore landscape options, including trellising, ground covering, drought-tolerant vine systems, something to help soften the building. We think there is some opportunity there. It's limited, there is not much space for landscaping, but we hope they can do something. That concludes my presentation. The applicant and the owner are here to answer any questions, if you'd like.
Yeah, if they wouldn't mind, come up, Mr. Vinn, and, please, and then we can open it up and have the Commissioners. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Reverend Commissioner. Thanks for, thanks for the presentation, very good. We'd like to thank you for your time tonight, thanks for seeing us, and my, Derek, I'm the applicant, so that, and this is Michael, the project sponsor, and we'd like to have your support of the project, and we're happy to answer any questions and questions.
Okay, so open up to the Commissioner, Commissioner Perron.
Just had a quick question. Just had a quick question. With regards to the three units that you have for very low-income is what is indicated, once those are rented out, will they will continually be for low-income, so if someone moves out, then it will always be designated? Is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
And, and these are, I noticed that it said for family of four, so what size of an apartment would you designate for the low-income?
Basically, most units will be one-bedroom units. So this is only for the three, the income for the family of four, but basically, I'm looking for the affordable housing unit, either for one-bedroom, or looking for a family of two, or three, something like that.
So there's no?
Then the, the count, the income will be lower.
Okay, so, go ahead, I'm sorry, because when I think of family, I think of more than two people, is all, you know?
Yeah, so the income, the income limit would be lowered for a family, say, of two that would occupy such a unit. So a family of four is just a, given as a reference point for affordability, but, I think it was $62,000, but that income limit would be lower for a smaller family, and that's what would occupy such a small unit. These are small studio and one-bedroom apartments.
So, okay, so all, pardon me, all of the units are not more than one-bedroom?
There's a two-bedroom.
Two-bedrooms.
Three two-bedrooms.
Three, three, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so.
And we have a meeting with the affordable housing, and the agreement is two, four, five, three.
One-bedroom.
Each, each levels, right, so second, third, and fourth floors.
Okay.
If I could answer your question about, we, I do have a table here that was based on HUD numbers and adopted by the county. If, if, say, the household size was only two people, it would be about $52,000 a year in income. It'd be quite, instead of 65.
Correct. So, but, so for instance, I'm just thinking, if it was a single parent with a couple kids, would that work for a one-bedroom? I'm just thinking, or would that be something they wouldn't qualify for?
I would check with the affordable housing, yeah, that's a little bit detailed for us. But we haven't, we had some kind of discussion, but as a affordable housing agreement, had a big, you know,議议, so that agreement was, they, they hold the details.
Sure.
And that would be between, you know, the city and also.
Just like the planning division, there's a housing division, and the developers negotiate affordable housing plan with the housing division, and just, like Commissioner South says, that, that'll be worked out when an affordable housing agreement, which comes later, is developed.
Yeah. Well, we were just saying is, I know we're, we're very happy to see that you didn't just choose to pay, you know, the amount, not a fine, but the amount, and that you did actually designate, you know, out of 22 units, three units for that, so we commend you for that.
Thank you for that.
We like that. Thank you.
Commissioners?
I just wanted to know, in terms of construction for, like, noise reduction. I know you're right next to the freeway, I used to live in the apartment down, down, down by the hospital, and like, I remember when I just moved there, it was like loud. I, I didn't hear anything in terms of the design about noise reduction for windows.
Oh. Window, window will be replaced as a double-pane wax window, and noise insulation will be added to the project at the building stage, and each floor will be noise-insulated for cleaning part as well, so that will be integrated into the building at the stage.
Another, oh, sorry, thank you. And then another, I know traffic has been an issue with all the developments that we've had coming through this commission, I was wondering, has there been a traffic study? Because I know when I used to live on that side of Daly City, I would go to that CVS down there, and it was hard getting out, because it's like, you just, like, if you're coming in, you can't, like, if I want to go in and out, it's not going to be, that's going to be an issue. So was there a traffic study done on?
There was not a traffic study done. This project didn't meet the threshold of what we typically need traffic studies for. Also, the parking is very limited here, so there won't be a whole lot of folks driving in and out of the parking lot. Is that something we might do?
The main thing is, because this location is so close to the Colma-Bart station.
Yes.
So we kind of encourage the tenants to using the mass transit system instead of, you know, always just drive.
Right. I'm sorry, I was just going to say was, because I'm thinking, I, I know where Bart is, and I know where you're at, and there's a big freeway in between, so.
Actually, they have a bridge, and the units were sent, and the road to the Bart station directly.
Easy walk, easy walking?
Yeah, we charted it out. It's, it's not the easiest.
Okay, no, no, I, I, you know, I don't usually walk that way, I'm just going to be truthful, but, but, yeah, it's not easy, but it's doable? Is that what you said?
Yes, it is doable.
And it's safe?
It's, it's pretty safe, yeah.
It's less than a mile.
Yeah, don't cross without looking at, or don't cross.
Yeah, you better watch your, watch your speed.
So where the crossing is, do you guys have all the, you know, the little?
Yeah.
Yes.
Buttons and all that, it's all up to date?
The area crosswalks are fairly up to date.
Yeah, I'm, because I haven't walked that way in a while, so.
Commissioner Satori?
Well, my, I have a question, but observation here, Your Honor, that we recently approved a, an infrastructure besides, you remember that very recently? So do you think it can affect also the construction there, or is there any incompatibility there, Mr. Michael?
Are you talking about between this project and the project next door?
Yes.
There shouldn't be, I would imagine, they'd be built at different times.
I'm looking at about, of course, the general interest of public health there, because of the in and out of vehicles. That is why, did you guys study that, that there are reconstruction also, or new building being approved? So if you're anticipating that, more or less, you can synchronize this with your plan? That's why, or you, you don't know?
You mean the, the.
The corner, corner lot has been also about six floors or five floors, something like that.
So actually, Mike, Michael actually has studied that.
Because if your, the sign is based on just on your, are you going to demolish the current building there?
No, no, no.
The building on it.
Two levels on top of that, yeah. So basically, the envelope is the same design.
Are you, what, engineers or architect only?
I, who, we're the engineer and architect.
Because if you're just going to put it up, I, I don't know, I can say that it might not be feasible, because of the danger of just putting up the weight of another floor, two floors.
We, our engineers are also working closely with the foundation work.
Because this building is an old building, then you're just going to put up another on top of the building, existing building?
That's ours.
It could be, I, I don't know.
They've gone all the structural calculation, and they, you know, it's necessary to improve, you know, the existing foundation to heightening, it will be incorporated into the building design, that, that's probably fine, and also, we're going to do the architect study to verify the solar condition as well. So all the active will be incorporated into them, and, you know, their firm actually is Mrs. Architect, they're also doing the structural design as well, so they did the demo study.
Because this building is dilapidated now. I, I don't know the, the structure, the foundation of that, because you will just take a look at it, you will see that it is rotten now. Now, you're going just to put up two stories there?
Well, through the chair, the, so the city's building division would be reviewing the construction drawings for this project, and they, the additional two floors would undergo a very rigorous plan check through the city's plan check process, and part of that would be evaluating the condition of the foundation, the footings of the building, the vertical structural members that exist. So there's a, there's a plan check process that would, you know, ensure structural integrity of the addition.
I think that's, that's put out, one of the, okay.
So given on the same subject matter, would that include the possibly having it retrofitted for current? for current conditions?
It may need to be upgraded seismically. It's something that would be...
Because the era that it was, I can see the Commissioner's concern, because the same era of Seaton, which is currently going through retrofitting during that era, because that was their big concern. So, now, we have that same issue in that building. It would be great, and if you're, to have it retrofitted, if so, the engineers will review that.
All the work needed is currently in the building.
Okay, great. And I just have a couple of things, like, when Commissioner Perano brought up the public transportation, would it be possible to let the residents know in some area, like, display like the, like, that there is a BART, that they know that there's a coma BART? Because a lot of people are moving in our area, but they live in Daly City, but they probably haven't talked to the BART, the pedestrian walkway, some way to let them know the bus schedules, or, you know, what's available in the transportation, in public transportation, and maybe in the corridor, or entryway, or however you want to do it, resources available so that they will be encouraged to use our public transportation? And would that be? Okay, support that, yeah, because we got to get everybody out of the cars, so you guys are doing a great job, and again, thank you for the low-income housing. And the other issue I was thinking, looking into was, if, since we're trying to do that and promote people walking and biking and all that, is there a bike storage on that property, or any?
No, we're, as of right now, the design does not include, like, bicycle parking, but that's something that we could look into as well.
Okay.
Bike swag, as San Francisco is enforcing bicycle parking on the projects, and we do have various experience working with bicycle parking departments, and I would...
You do.
...outcome that we can add bicycle parking. Is there a certain amount that we would like to see?
What's a 22-unit?
Yes, a 22-unit, so...
Some of the standards are dictated, the city's adopted the green building ordinance.
Yes.
Some of the standards for requiring bicycle parking in buildings is dictated by that code.
Okay.
I'm familiar myself with what that is, but the...
But I'm sure they would be able to give it to us.
So, staff can work with them and make sure? That'd be great. And then, the other thing was, I thank Mr. Allen for addressing the greenery. I do know that it's limited for you guys, so try to take it away the starkness, and thank you, Mr. Allen, for addressing that. And then, I know that there's a project that we had built, and it's hard to put everything in one building, I do understand that. But if we're going to have a family area, I don't know if you ever visited the rooftop of our mid-pen on Mission Street? They do have, like, at least one smaller place structure that, like, it's just really smaller, but it is a place where at least they're able to take their child out and be safe in that area. And if you can at least look into that, that would, that would be great. I don't know if you're familiar with that. I think that our, the staff can help you on that, and on the rooftop, because the square footage of the whole rooftop is approximately, pretty... Yeah, 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 exactly, right? And I think that, let's see, affordable impact fee, thank you for that. Let's see, and Republic Services is going to do their own circulation study?
Yes.
Yeah, on their own, correct?
The new configuration has been approved by Republic Services.
Okay. And then, we already, you already, I know, contained for the plan during the construction, to make sure that the dust control and the noise and tractors coming in and out in that area, because it is, people cut around that corner pretty fast, they really do, is where they do that.
Sorry, through the chair, how old is the building? What year was it built?
1963.
Okay.
Yeah, 1963.
Okay, no, I'm just curious on that, because that is probably roughly around a few years shy of what Seaton was built. So, I had a quick question. If you find that it just costs more to retrofit the building, are you then going to think about demolish and build up new?
Yeah, yeah, I think that you mean, you know, the structure design process, you know, work closely with the unit firm, and see, you know, what is it costing efficiently?
Because it's only, I mean, it's two stories.
I think that, you know, hopefully, we will make enough work to make it sound, yeah, to make sure I receive the statement.
And I guess my other question was, once you're building, I know every floor costs money, but your decision to only go up another two on top of the two, is that something to do with the weight, how it's going to hold on, hold the weight? If you had to, if you find that you had to, you know, get rid of the building, start from the beginning, is that something, you'd still only do four stories, or would you look at the...
We're actually limited by the building apartments, right, the building apartments, so we actually have the building apartment, as I said, as part of the height requirement for building codes is actually...
You couldn't do anything more, no matter what? Okay, just curious.
We can add, but then, because of the cost, yeah.
Yeah.
Because basically, you know, the package is, you know, basically, it's a, both, you can only have a both-story apartment, the building, yeah? If you go anything over, you have to build a two-level building, so it would be much more costly.
And it was an office building, correct, before?
Yes.
Okay, that's what, yeah, okay, yeah.
Back in the day.
It looks like the original construction was apartment, and then went to office.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Oh, interesting.
Looking at the building permit.
Yeah, but it, something needs to be done at that corner.
Through the chair, I wanted to just address Commissioner Dasmagmoll's question about noise, so the noise analysis wasn't prepared as part of the project, the project's categorically exempt from CEQA. But typically, when the project proceeds to the building permit stage, we will require some sort of a noise analysis to ensure general plan compliance, and that they would build into the new construction, as well as any new windows that they're placing in the building that they conform to the general plan noise standard. So, that will occur prior to building permit issuance.
Okay, okay, that sounds good. Thank you, I appreciate, appreciate your time, and you did an excellent job on the thing. So, we have a seat, and then, let's see, any other questions before they sit? The commissioners? Commissioner Satori? You're okay? Okay. So, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to close.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now, we want to adopt the findings as outlined, and that which includes, if anybody could do a readback, Michael, on what we added?
The windows.
The requirement for the landscaping.
Bicycle.
Right. So, the addition of landscaping. We'll go in and place a condition of approval to address the... To address the noise question, that noise, you know, acoustical analysis being incorporated into the ultimate building design. Is there a third?
They're going to look into the bike storage.
Bike storage, okay.
And displaying the outreach for the, so the residents are, know what's available in public transportation, and possible retrofitting the building if necessary, and if not, then, like Commissioner Perano said, then what's feasible for, you know, when it becomes feasible or not, in that area. And I think that, that's about it.
I think you also mentioned...
And what else? Oh, in the playground.
Yeah, a little bit more of a usable open space on the rooftop.
Yes, for a family.
For a family, right.
Yeah, so, thank you very much. So, may I have a motion to adopt the findings as outlined herein?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now, we're going to affirm the environmental assessment. May I have a motion to affirm the environmental assessment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're going to do a roll call, we're going to recommend that the city council approve use permit UPR-7-17-12923, and design review DR-7-17-12924, subject to the conditions of approval outlined herein. May I have a motion with a roll call, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Peranio?
Yes.
Commissioner Giovanni?
Yes.
Commissioner Dasmagmoll?
Yes.
Commissioner Satori?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, thank you to you guys for the hard work you did, and again, for putting the low-income housing, really amendable. And now, we're going to move on, and we're going to see if there are any public appearances or any staff communications. Hearing none. Are there any acquisitions or vacations? Section 65602A?
I would like to say that, thank you very much to the staff for giving me this, all the material support for the projected planning commissioners academy at Monterrey. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Looking forward to it as well. And then, also, based on what happened today at the YouTube in our local San Bruno, I would like to ask that we close and have a moment of silence for the victims and survivors as we, this happens to hit us pretty close at home, and for all our first responders who did, they responded, I believe, in two minutes to that scene. So, may we have a moment of silence, please, before we adjourn? Thank you, and have a good evening. Thank you, everyone.